December seventeenth meeting 2020 meeting of Franklin Township zoning board of adjustment. Franklin Township's operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And it's been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Board of the meeting has been relocated from the council chambers Franklin Township municipal building to a virtual meeting format. As being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. Relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website, and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. Link to the virtual meeting, by the way, WebEx, call in numbers without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available by the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, please move yourself unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicants, witnesses have finished presenting, at which time we'll ask the board for comment. Would you mind Christine going over the instructions for public input?
Sure, hold on one second. I just have to get to it, hold on a second. Hold on, it won't let me get to that that way. I gotta go to my other computer, just give me a second.
Christine, I'll just, I'll just read them in.
You have it? Cause I'm, okay.
Okay, so for those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. You can press the raised hand button. To use this feature, click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of the screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon, which will place a small hand icon next to your name in the participant list. Or use the chat function, either use the default, which is everyone, or chat Mark Healy. Do not send the message to Christine Woodbury as she's unable to review messages during the meeting, and do not use the QA function as that section will not be checked during the meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have opportunity to provide comment. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if on WebEx, please press the lower hand button. If calling in, please press star three again.
Okay, we'll begin with a roll call.
Anthony Caldwell. Laura Grauman.
Here.
Bruce McCracken.
Here.
Alan Rich. Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Robert Shepard.
Here.
Joel Reese.
Here.
Cheryl Bacia.
Here.
Richard Prokanic.
Here.
Kunal Luckier.
Here.
And Robert Thomas.
Here. Before we get into the regular business, I wanted to make a comment before the end of the meeting when everything gets a little rushed. I know that this is Laura's last meeting. She didn't wish to be reappointed. On the, I hope I'm speaking, and I'm sure I am, on behalf of the board, and thanking her for her dedicated and invaluable service. She's always had relevant pertinent input. I'm going to miss her little notes back and forth during the meeting, keeping my, keeping me awake and alert to some of the other things that are going on. But thank you for your service and good luck in using all your extra spare time.
Thanks.
Okay, minutes to the regular meeting, October fifteenth, 2020. Any motion?
I move. One second.
First did I saw Joel's second. Who first the meeting? I mean, who first the minute? Laura?
I think I did.
Okay, Laura Grauman.
Yes.
Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Robert Shepard.
Yes.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic.
Yes.
Kunal Luckier.
Yes.
Chairman Thomas.
Yes, and then minutes of the regular meeting, November fifth, 2020, we need a motion.
I move.
Second. Laura, Laura Grauman.
Yes.
Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Joel Reese. Cheryl Bacia. Kunal Luckier.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. One resolution regarding the 2021 zoning board calendar. If you've had a chance to look at it and anyone willing to offer a motion, it would be in order.
I move.
Who moved in whose second? I'm sorry.
My second.
Yeah.
It in Cheryl's second, okay. Laura Grauman.
I understand.
Bruce McCracken. Staying, Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Robert Shepard.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
I don't have, have a copy of it online.
You don't have a copy of it?
Can, can, can I obtain a copy online? Or can you send a copy to me?
I can't do it right this second. I can read them to you, is that acceptable to you?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it, I just don't have.
You're okay with it? Okay. Cheryl Bacia.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic.
Yes.
Kunal Luckier.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. The hearing section this evening, Tabachnik Fine Foods Incorporated, ZDA twenty oh 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 nineteen. Relief of a condition related to retention of an existing gravel area elimination of a proposed guide rail at twelve thirty Hamilton Street, block ninety-two lots twelve to forty-three in the R ten zone, has been withdrawn without prejudice, so that will not be heard. Continuing on, Rocher Group Bottle Republic, ZDA twenty oh 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 twenty. See variants in which the applicant's asking to place a building mounted sign of sixty-eight square feet of thirty-one fifty-one Route twenty-seven Franklin Park, block thirty-four point oh five lot forty-three in the NB zone. This has, this was carried from the previous December third meeting, and the notification was needed. Are we ready to proceed?
Yeah, fine. Christine, Lane Miller is the attorney on this, correct? I believe that's right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring him in, make him a panelist.
Lane Miller and Drew Patel, if he's in the attendees, that those are the two for this one.
Evening all, Lane Miller, on behalf of the applicant Rocher Group. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. And, and I'm sorry, who's the other person that spoke, that's, is going to be speaking?
Drew, I believe it's Drew Patel.
Drew Patel.
And we have Keaton Patel, who may be calling in.
Okay, and do we have a area code and the first three numbers, first three, yeah? Do we know what is the beginning of his telephone number?
I believe it is, I believe Keaton Patel's is nine seven three. And if you'll give me two seconds, I should, nine seven three four seven nine.
I don't see him on here.
Okay, that is not too helpful.
Um, Mark, I see a couple of hands up. Maybe one of those people are Drew Patel. It's, it's just by the numbers.
All right, I'll guess I'll ask the people with their hands up.
Maybe one of those people are them.
Yeah, and this, you know, just this does give me the opportunity to tell the public that when you do raise your hand, we do have a number of hearings. So if you do raise your hand, please only raise it for the hearing that we are currently having. That'll make our meeting more efficient. So let me check the two call-in folks.
Mr. Healy, if I may.
Yep, yep.
Perhaps what we could do is ask everyone who is not Drew or Keaton Patel to put down their hand. And that way, by process of elimination, we'll hopefully know who it is, and then those individuals can raise their hand again later.
That's a good suggestion. So those members of, of the public, the two, especially the two that are calling in, if you're not Drew Patel, could you please press star three to unraise your hand?
Actually, a third hand, okay, there it is. There's one left.
Let me say, let me say. Caller, are you Drew Patel by any chance?
Yes, yes, hi. How are you?
Okay, good, okay. All right, so then let me make, so then let me, now that we have him on, I will say then now, if any members of the public want to ask a question about this application, which is for a sign variance at thirty-one fifty-one Route twenty-seven, feel free to either do the raise hand function, WebEx, or star three if you're calling in. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. As we've indicated, this is an application by the Rocher Group for a sign variance at a storefront at thirty-one fifty-one Route twenty-seven in Franklin Township. My witness is going to be Drew Patel, who's a principal of Bottle Rocher Group, which trades as Bottle Republic. And I believe that the application contains the materials relating to the sign. In short, it's a storefront sign because of the distance from the roadway and the nature of the configuration of the sign. It, when measured around the perimeter, is sixty-eight square feet, as opposed to the thirty that's permitted by ordinance. Given the nature of the property, its distance from the road, and the need for the driving public to be able to see the sign without impeding traffic flow, we're requesting the variance.
Mr. Landy, would you like me to swear, to swear in Mr. Patel at this point?
I would, I would appreciate that. He is the only witness on this application.
Sure. Mr. Patel, can you hear me, please?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, can you, wherever you are, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Could you please state your name, spell your last for the record, and provide us with your business address?
Yes, it's Drew Patel, P A T E L. The address is thirty-one fifty-one NJ twenty-seven Franklin Park.
Okay, Mr. Lane is all yours.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Patel, you are a principal of Rocher Group, correct?
Yes.
And that organization does business as Bottle Republic, correct?
Correct, correct.
And what's the nature of the Bottle Republic business?
It's a fine wine and retail store. And we sell, yeah, alcohol.
You, you currently have a location in Franklin, correct?
Yes, seventeen sixty Eastern Avenue.
Okay, and the signage at that location is similar to the signage you desire to put on this building?
Yes, that's correct.
And this is going to be a new location? You're going to keep operating out of the other location or no?
Yes, we'll be operating out of both locations.
And when you sought approval for the signage on the other location, you had a similar variance, correct?
Correct.
This signage is going to be similar in nature to that signage?
Yes.
Okay, we're asking for a variance for sixty-eight square feet where thirty permitted by code. Why are you asking for that larger sign?
Well, the signage is consistent with the space and the size of the building. And in fact, it's, the building itself is three hundred and ten feet away from the main road, which is even a longer distance than the current eastern sign, so it's difficult to see through the thing, and we don't want to impede, you know, motors to slow down and get into an accident, but it's consistent with the sign and the building.
And the building is in fact a shopping center, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, this was a larger space vacated and has, has now been separated into a number of separate units?
Yes.
And you would be one of those units?
That's correct.
Okay, and we see that Ms. Woodbury has displayed on the screen, well, actually, you can't see it, but I will represent to you that it is the application we filed, and it is the signage as displayed with a mock-up of what it would look like on the building.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that is the signage that you're seeking the approval for?
Correct.
Yeah. I don't think I have any other questions to this witness unless one of the members of the board or one of the professionals wants some more information.
Any board questions?
I have a question. Are the other businesses in that center, are they of this business?
I can't hear the question.
Okay, this is Cheryl Bacia speaking. I'm asking if there are other businesses in that same plaza that are of similar size?
The Dollar General's, yeah. The Dollar General has the same, oh, a similar sized sign.
And Mr. Patel, is it accurate to say this would, the signage would be consistent with similar signs, not only in that center, but along Route twenty-seven in that area?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have several, several. Mr. Patel, isn't it a fact that at the front of that, front edge of the shopping center, there are two monument signs on which all of the different stores are identified in, as to their location in the shopping center?
Not, not based on location or geographic location, but yes, it does indicate that every, like, the monument sign would show what building is in which shopping center, correct?
I don't understand what your, what your limitation is. Your, the, the signs, the monument sign, the two monument signs at the, at the front edge of the parking lot along Route twenty-seven has the name of each store that's in that shopping center. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, now, when you tell, when you say that the Dollar General store is the same size, I've been to that location, and the Dollar General sign is about, seems to me to be about twenty-four inches high by about three feet long. What is your estimate of the size of that sign?
From the distance, it's, it's almost the same size as ours. I mean, if you look at it from, I have to take a quick look, but. Hold on. So yeah, our sign is, is gonna be the similar size to that sign.
And can you give the dimensions?
I don't know the exact dimensions of the Dollar General, but from the distance, from looking at it right now online, it's, it's no bigger than, it's, it's probably the similar size to that.
More letters.
It's just more letters, so it may look a little bit bigger, but it's the same size and space, correctly.
All sign includes wine, spirits, beer. That, that's creating the square footage.
Right, so what, what, our, our sign includes the letters, Wine Spirits Beer in smaller letters, which increases the actual surface area of the sign, but the sign itself, the main Bottle Republic sign is no bigger than the Dollar General.
Okay, has, has your landlord approved this sign?
Yes.
Other questions?
Questions.
That completes your testimony?
Yes.
We can open to the public.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just have one question. Mr. Patel, what was the address of that Eastern Avenue Bottle, Bottle Republic?
Seventeen sixty Eastern Avenue.
Okay, great, thank you.
Cedar Grove, yep.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, before we do the public, can I just ask one question? So I just want to make sure. Christine, can you scroll down a little bit to, so you can see the, the site? And I know Mr., I don't know if Mr. Patel can answer this, but maybe Mr. Miller can. So we've shown, this is an aerial of the site. Mr. Miller, can you describe to the board where this space is going, where this space is going to be?
Okay, I cannot base on that aerial, but Mr. Patel, when you're looking at the shopping center, where within the center is your Bottle Republic going to be located? Is it on the right side, left side, middle?
No, so we're, we're directly to the left of the, so there's the Dollar General, and then right out to the left of them is the haircut place. Fantastic Sam's, and then we are right next to them. To the left side of them. So this was, yeah, I mean, this was a new space, a new entrance was created. An entrance didn't exist there prior. But so it's to the left side of the strip mall, more to the left.
Do you know was previously occupied by that space?
So it was a Chinese supermarket. Asian, Asian fusion.
Asian Fresh.
Asian Fresh.
Okay, that's, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, again, if there are any other questions, we'll take them. If not, we'll open to the public.
Okay, so I'm gonna check, Mr. Chairman, to see, I don't see anybody indicating in chat their desire to, to comment or question, and I don't see any hand raised in attendee list. So I don't believe there's anybody wishing to speak on this.
Okay, then, Mr. Miller, anything you want to close with?
I believe, given the nature of the property, the distance from the roadway, and the nature of the signage as it would be portrayed on the frontage of the store, it's appropriate, the variance should be granted.
Okay, board members, any comments, other questions or a motion?
No, I, I've looked at this particular site, and I, I think this sign is going to be outsized as compared to the other properties that are on-site, except for the, the large supermarket that used to be there, they had a bigger sign. I'm just troubled by the idea of the increased size of the signage on these buildings when all the other properties there seem to have signs that are smaller in nature. I don't agree with Mr. Patel's characterization of this sign being the same size as the Dollar General sign. So I don't think that they've made their case that the variance would not result in a substantial detriment to the public good and will not impair the intended purpose of the zoning law, because everybody else seems to be doing fine with signs that are within limits on this property.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, can I, can I add one thing? So the, the location at seventeen sixty Eastern, the, the sign is the same size as that we're proposing in thirty-one fifty-one in Franklin Park. And we actually have two signs that were approved by variance here, and the distance of the road is, is almost double. And, and, and this is also an historical zone at seventeen sixty Eastern. So we, we passed a variance on that one, and on this one, the distance is double from the road. It's three hundred and ten feet. So it's, it's quite far from the main road, hence the reason why we're seeking the same variance almost, and same size, stature of the sign.
I live right near the, the Eastern Avenue site. And I was aware when the sun went up, that sign, I think, on Eastern Avenue is larger than any of the other signs in what is a smaller shopping center, but I, it, it, it seems like it's an okay sign. It, it particularly offensive if the store is going to be twice the distance from the road. Now, I haven't been to that shopping center, so I can't speak to the issue of the monument sign, but certainly as compared to the Eastern Avenue sign, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
This is Kunal. I, I, I agree with Laura, and we, we, we've approved the, the other sign in the past, and, and, and we, we really should want to, that the businesses survive right now. And, and I'm, I'm prepared to offer a motion to the grandparents, yes, you want it?
Yeah, even I agree with Laura and Joe. I think distance, and I've seen one on Eastern Avenue, and I travel this road on Route twenty-seven every day to my home. Given the, the distance from the road and the fact that any and every business needs attention right now, I think I'm okay to. No, I believe that we are okay, or we should be okay.
Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
I'll, I'll place a motion. And I, I, I move that we grant a Rocher group guarantee for ZDA twenty ditch zero 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 two zero, as, as requested.
Second.
Okay, call the board.
Laura Grauman. Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Robert Shepard.
No.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Cheryl Bacia. Cheryl Bethia.
No.
Rich, uh, no, uh, Robert Thomas. I'm sorry, Robert Thomas, did you say something?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All right, that's the seven, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Thank you, members of the board.
E P J's LLC. That Supreme Productions, ZVA twenty oh 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 twenty-one, use variance in which the applicant's asking to operate a business corporate and social event suite at two JFK Boulevard Somerset, block three eighty-six, lot one thirty-eight, in the GB zone.
Christine, um, I misplaced the list, um, is it?
That would be Ms. Gordon.
I'll bring her in to make her a panelist.
Brett and Danielle, D A N Y A L, are the owners.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Gordon?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and who, so who are you gonna have, who are you gonna present tonight?
I have Danielle and Jason Robinson, uh, they're on together.
Okay, I'll bring them in.
And John Chatwick.
Okay, I'll bring him in as well. All right, so they're both brought in, so uh, you can proceed, Ms. Gordon.
Okay, good evening, everyone, my name is Hadisha Gordon of Zublatton Jones, P C. I'm the attorney for the applicant DJ's LLC, doing business at Supreme Productions. Uh, the applicant is a mobile entertainment company, looking to expand their business venture to operate a private event suite. To do this, they're requesting a D one use variance uh, to operate its corporate, social, uh, and business event suite um, in the existing commercial and retail space located at two JFK Boulevard, uh, block three eight six point seventeen, lot one three eight. Uh, the subject property is, as you stated, in the GB zone. Um, the applicant is proposing to host corporate and business events such as book signings, fundraisers, bar and bat mitzvahs, uh, sweet sixteen's, and other special milestone uh, events. Um, the space, again, is an existing space in the, on the second floor of the building. They're not proposing any physical modifications to the building or to the site. Uh, first, I'll have uh, Jason and Danielle Robinson sworn in uh, to provide testimony.
Uh, will they be providing testimony individually or together?
Uh, it's together.
Okay, uh, I was gonna swear a minute, one at a time, um, Mark, are they are they on?
Hello?
Yes, we're here.
We're.
Okay, individually, uh, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address.
Uh, it's Jason Robinson, R O B I N S O N, um, two JFK Boulevard, Somerset, New Jersey.
Ma'am. Yeah, go ahead, just name an address.
Okay, Danielle Robinson, R O B I N S O N, address is the same, two JFK Boulevard, Somerset, New Jersey.
Okay, Ms. Gordon, yeah, Ms. Gordon, you can go ahead, proceed.
Okay, Jason, would you uh, please state your title? And also tell us uh, more about the nature of Supreme Productions' business and uh, the services that you offer?
Sure, sure, uh, so I'm Jason Robinson, I'm the co-owner and president of the company Supreme Productions, um, I also handle the uh, mobile events uh, side of the company, uh, just to give a brief background and history of the company. Uh, we've been in business for about fifteen years. Uh, we started off as solely a mobile entertainment company, meaning uh, we would provide emcees, DJs, uh, dancers, um, audio, pro lighting for uh, private events such as weddings, sweet sixteen's, mitzvahs, uh, corporate events, things of that nature. Um, the maturation of the company pretty much came with uh, trends. Um, and as things were trending, uh, we made more observations. Uh, just for instance, for uh, mitzvahs, typically we would come in as solely the the entertainment group, so we would provide the emcee, the DJ, uh, TVs, things of that nature. Uh, but one thing that I did notice was where parents were bringing in another company for uh, the furniture end of it, or a kid's lounge section, for instance. Uh, so they would provide the uh, LED furniture, uh, and lounge furniture for the kids' section, so that brought about the um, our idea of investing in the lounge furniture end of the uh, the business itself. Uh, that kind of segued into the sweet sixteen's. We saw that sweet sixteen's were kind of trending more away from the traditional courts, uh, where the court was uh, sitting at a long uh, head table, to more of like the sweet sixteen entourage. Uh, so we would uh, provide the furniture for that entourage. Uh, then we, it kind of expanded and got more corporate, uh, so we were providing a lot of furniture rentals for uh, corporate conferences, uh, things of that nature. Uh, and lastly, the uh, the event space uh, came from uh, us, I guess, pretty much working with a broad range of clients. Um, on the end of the spectrum, uh, we're working with a lot of clients that necessarily want or couldn't afford to have their event at, for instance, like an Imperial, or a Palace, or Marigold, um, or just couldn't afford the uh, maybe eighty dollars or a hundred dollars a plate. Uh, and on the other side of the spectrum, uh, they didn't necessarily want to have it at, say, for instance, like a firehouse, or a VFW, or something like that, so the idea kind of stemmed from that, and said, hey, why not come in the middle? And come at a reasonable pr- a reasonable price point, um, where everything is included. Uh, so we have, you know, furniture, the lighting, uh, TVs for presentations, for corporate events, uh, montages, um, and it's affordable, um, so that's where that idea kind of came into play. Um, also, for the event space, we're thinking that uh, it, they're not limited to just the cuisine that's offered by the venue, so in in our instance, uh, it's, you know, you're able to bring in your own uh, caterer, um, so you have that flexibility. Um, so that's something that, you know, we want to offer also with uh, the sound system itself. Uh, something that's controlled by the house, uh, another thing, just just from observation from our uh, just just from expertise and from, you know, our our own history, uh, we ran into a lot of DJs who might be volume deaf, for instance, so, you know, something that's controlled by the house can be kept at a level, volume. Um, and those were our our biggest priorities, you know, just to, and that's one of them, is just to to make sure that volume is kept at a a reasonable level. So that's just the the segue of um, our business.
Okay, um, and you both are township residents, correct?
That's correct, so uh, yeah, both of us, uh, myself, we've been here, I I've been here for about thirty years. My wife a little bit longer, um, we both met at Franklin High School, uh, so we are sweet, uh, high school sweethearts. Um, so yeah, we've been here in the community for 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 quite a bit, you know, um, yeah, yeah, so that, again, like, you know, that kind of uh, talks towards us, that being the number one priority. We li- we lived in Franklin Township for for this time because we realized it's the suburbs, and the number one priority is not to infringe on anyone's right for peace and quiet in the suburbs. So, that's why, uh, you know. Sure.
Okay, and also you've uh, previously hosted uh, and provided services for uh, events within the township, correct?
That's correct.
Would you please highlight just a couple of events that you've provided um, or services for, hosted within the township?
Uh, sure, thanks, uh, so, uh, in history, we worked with probably all the public schools, um, for uh, the Franklin Middle School, we do their prom, as far as providing entertainment, DJ, MC, photo booth, uh, the entertainment for the, for, you know, uh, broader scheme things. Uh, Franklin uh, High School, we handle their prom. Uh, always to the Franklin Park School, with the new Claremont School, uh, we supply services for them. Uh, we've done a ton of events for um, uh, First Baptist Church, from their annual D free events. Uh, we supply a lot of audio visual for them to Pastor Sorries' um, twenty-fifth anniversary. Uh, we work with township, uh, the Parks and Recreation, uh, we've done their uh, holiday party. Uh, we've worked with the annual trunk of tree on Hamilton Street. Um, and we also worked, uh, we provided pro bonus services for uh, Chamber of Commerce, which we are a member of, is as well. So our, here in the township is is pretty intense.
Okay, thank you, uh, and Danielle, um, I understand you're the events manager um, for the business, correct?
Correct.
Okay, would you provide your uh, actual title, and then highlight exactly what it is that you guys are proposing to do here?
Sure, uh, so, good evening, everyone, my name is Danielle Robinson, I'm the co-owner, vice president, and event specialist at Supreme Productions. Uh, we are proposing to open an event space that will host various social affairs, business, corporate, and personal. Some examples are business meetings, conferences, youth activities, uh, bridal and baby showers, mitzvahs, and milestone events like retirement parties, um, engagement parties and birthdays. Um, our hours of operations uh, would be nine o'clock A M. to ten o'clock P M. Sunday through Thursday, and we would like for uh, the hours to be nine o'clock A M. till midnight, Friday and Saturday. Uh, the space boasts white leather furniture, LED lighting, TV screens, and LED dance floor, um, highboy tables, and a beverage and food station, so that clientele can cater in their own food and beverage, including alcohol. Uh, we will not provide catering or beverages of any sort, and but of note, uh, if a client wishes to bring in their own alcohol, we require that they employ a New Jersey certified bartender, vetted, and approved by us. Um, the space will essentially be a turnkey event space with everything that you need for your entertainment needs, including ample parking, uh, chafing dishes, uh, and burners to keep food warm, refrigerators and coolers to keep beverages and food cold, as well as a photo booth and an in-house uh, DJ, as Jason was saying, that's gonna be uh, monitored to keeping the event at lounge level for more classy affairs.
Okay, thank you, and just um, for right now, during COVID times, um, you guys are aware of uh, CDC rules and guidelines, as well as uh, recommendations, um, and do intend to uh, comply with those, correct?
Yes, we are fully compliant, and I stay in tune with uh, Governor Murphy's briefing pretty much daily, and we will be fully compliant.
Okay, thank you, um, that's all my questions for Danielle and Jason.
Okay, thank you, board questions, anything from?
Yes, I have a question, this is Gary Rosenfeld, uh, I'm quite familiar with this uh, shopping center. Um, I would like you to like, spend on two items, the uh, parking issue, number one, and uh, I'm concerned when people are gonna bring in food, um, do you have refrigerator space, or or what? Uh, do you have any kind of uh, license for food? Would you like, spend on that and the parking place?
Sure.
Danielle and or Jason, you guys can answer as far as how you'll handle the food. Um, I think uh, for John Chatwick, maybe best to opine on parking, um, when he comes in, um, and to just to talk about uh, parking guidelines and that that nature, but Danielle and Jason, you can feel free to speak about uh, handling food.
So with regard to the food handling, um, as mentioned, I, the food will be catered in, so we will not be handling any food, however, we will be providing the uh, means to keep food warm where need be, and to keep foods cold where need be. So the caterers should have their licensing not required by us.
Uh, I have a question, uh, is this the first time that you've act, you're providing a space as opposed to mobile services where the customer provides their space? Or have you got, have you a space elsewhere? What is your experience with with the actual space that you?
So we have hosted events um, at a numbers, numerous locations. Uh, we did have a space temporarily in the township, which unfortunately didn't work out because of the business zone, which is what brings us here today, so that we can get a variance in the general business zone.
So this is the first, really, this is the first time that you're looking for a a permanent established space. For the re- for the most part, your experience has been going to where the parties are and providing whatever that they require.
That's correct, for the most part, yes, we've been man, mobile, mobile entertainment.
Other questions?
I I do have one quick question, um, it it appears that there's some residential property, uh, putting yours. Um, is is sound an issue? How how will you control sound if you are gonna be open till midnight?
Sure.
You wanna answer that, or should I?
Uh, sure, so uh, since October, I mean, the landlord has been gracious enough for uh, us to store our inventory there, but during that period, we have done our due diligence. Uh, so we take decibel readings uh, from inside of the place. Again, as Danielle mentioned, um, everything is kept to a lounge level, uh, but we did peek out the sound, just to make sure if any, there was any sound leakage in the rear of the room, uh, so we looked at a decibel reading of the of the, well, inside of the building, if it was ninety-five decibels, which is pretty much just to hear a rock concert, which would, we would never have. Um, it still didn't leak to the rear, uh, we read, had a decibel reading of sixty-five, which is pretty much from uh, general traffic.
Thank you.
I have another question, having the, um, if you're if you're having a largeish event, what is the number of people, the maximum number of people that you would be having this event for at this location?
So uh, ultimately, I would like to defer that question to our planner, but based on the uh, the square footage and the universally used uh, mathematics to determine uh, person per square foot, we would be able to do one hundred and fifty people.
Okay, um, the the thing that um, concerns me, and I'm not sure where the parking is, and I guess John Chadwick can describe that relative to the residence, but what I'm concerned about is when people leave um, into the parking area. Um, and particularly if there's going to be a whole celebratory mood, there's, there's going to be a certain amount of noise, and depending on whether it's ten o'clock or midnight, I'm just wondering, um, and if there is liquor involved, obviously, you're not a bar, but I I I'm aware of other situations where you've got celebrations near residents, and that that can create a problem when people are then going in to get their parts at the end of the evening. How is that gonna be um, regulated or controlled?
So that's understandable and a great question, um, again, as mentioned, we are also township residences, so we expect the peace and quiet attribute uh, that is expected from the township owners, I'm I'm sorry, the townhouse owners. Uh, so that where the parking is, if I can try to give you a visual, where the parking is, that's only for our employees. So we also have, if they're facing the building, we also have parking that's off to the right, and that's, I'm actually in back of the storage unit, that's on Eastern Avenue, um, and in the front of the building, there's ample parking as well, which is where we would make sure that most of our clients know parts, only time they would park in that back right area, if there's overflow.
Right, and in case of overflow, you do have mandatory uh, valet, so uh, and what that does is alleviate any traffic from going into that overflow of um, of of parking. So the only traffic that will be in the rear of the room, in the rear of the building, would be just the valet park.
So that's, yeah, parking in the front of the building will then not impact the townhouse residents that bought your property?
It honestly shouldn't, um, just based on the tenants that are there now, and the the regular in and out. Um, and I and I understand your concern with regard to the drinking, um, which leads me back to my uh, original um, opening regard to having a bartender, who is going to make sure that people drink responsibly. Um, and just historically, we've found that uh, people don't all kind of leave in one big rush. We do turn up the house system at about fifteen minutes prior to the event, so that we can start having people toned down, and people kind of trickle out. So it being in the front, I do believe will alleviate a great deal of the um, may occur worst-case scenario in the back, again, only the valet people will be back there.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
I do have a question also, I noticed in the area that you're designating for, as one of your parking areas, in back of the self-storage. in back of the self-storage facility, there seem to be, I don't know specifically, but a large number of school buses parked there. Is that going to remain? Is that going to be in competition for you to use?
So we were made aware of the bus, the buses being parked there. As of Monday evening, the buses were removed and are not on the site.
Have you had a chance to speak to the neighbors about this venture?
Neighbors meaning the people who also occupy that same building?
Right.
We've spoken to several of them, introduced ourselves already, and we don't, we don't seem to have any objectors.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Okay.
You stated that the hours of operation were going to be 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday, Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM Friday and Saturday. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So you plan on operating seven days a week? So you plan on operating seven days per week?
Yes.
That's correct.
Now you open at 9:00 AM. Do you plan on doing a breakfast or a lunch?
Correct. So for businesses, mainly the weekdays are going to be designated toward businesses and corporate events where they may want to have brunches or breakfasts for their employees.
So theoretically, in a single day, you can do a breakfast, a lunch, and a dinner?
No, I would think more so two events, only because we do allow for cleanup.
Okay, so theoretically, you would do a turn, two turnovers for a single day or a turnover for a single day where you would have, say, a breakfast or a lunch during the morning shift, and then an evening shift that could last, say, into the 10 o'clock or the 12:00 AM hour?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, so that's something that, glad that to clarify that. You talked about decibel levels. When were those decibel levels tests conducted?
Sometime in November.
And who were they conducted by?
We did them. We have, we have a decibel reader.
Okay, now you're not an expert in decibel levels, are you?
I wouldn't say that's, I wouldn't say an expert, but I've done sound in the past.
I know you're familiar with sound, and I'll attest to that. You, however, are not an expert in decibel levels, but you did do a decibel level test. And you stated, just a little bit confusing, it was at 65 decibel levels, which is akin to a traffic. Can you, am I, did I understand that correctly or can you repeat that?
That's correct. So from the rear of the building, the decibel level was about at 65 dBs. Meanwhile, simultaneously, in the actual room, the decibel level was at around 98, to be exact. So it's peaked out. And again, that's just something that's at the, the highest capacity that the volume would, it wouldn't ever be at that level, because again, we're keeping it regulated to lounge level volume.
Do you know if the 65 decibel level is at the property line satisfies the township ordinance?
Oh, well, you know, based on the surrounding sound, because at times, you just see that none of the sound leaves the room just due to the amount of cushion in the rear room. So the 65 decibels is being produced by the traffic.
Right. So I think the, I think what the board attorney wants to hear is that you guys will comply with noise requirement levels, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think what I was trying to get at is even though you, your test that you conducted shows 65 dBs, I don't know how, in terms of the township ordinance, whether it does satisfy or whether it doesn't satisfy. And I just wanted to get your answer on the record as to whether you, you know whether or not that actually does satisfy the township ordinance or not.
So if I can clarify, that 65 decibels was what outside area that we were in picked up? Because audibly, we could not hear the music from inside. So that's just the natural number that was out there with, you know, just sound, traffic, birds, people.
Understood. So you, you're, when you're testifying that when you did the decibel level test and inside the room was at 98 dBs, you could not hear the music from the outside of the building?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. You also stated that you have some parking near the residence, near the townhomes, and you will reserve those for your employees. How will you do that?
That's, I think that's mandated by the land, the owner.
The landlord has that in his lease, that the parking in the rear is for employees only. As far as we are concerned, we would be happy to put up cones during our events. But also stated, we will have valet there that can make sure traffic, or like, you know, is not being filtered out that way. And they know which way to go.
Great. Will you have valet for all events or for only those events where you max out at your capacity?
Yeah, so we would only have valet for events that will have 75, 76 people or more. For people that are, that, events that are 75 people or less, we believe that they would be able to fit in that front parking area.
Right.
Would you agree to that as a stipulation or condition of approval if the board were to act favorably on this resolution?
Yes.
Thanks. You have nothing further.
One last question. How many, you, you mentioned employees. How many employees do you have and what do they do?
So we have, we have upwards of seven employees at any given time. We count ourselves as two for management, and we will always invite either one of us just to make sure things are running smoothly. And we also have three event staff members, depending on the number of people that will be there. Again, if it's 76 people or more, we will have three staff members and also the mandated bartender if they are going to be serving liquor and the parking attendants or the valet.
And these are regular employees that you have or these transient employees?
So the valet would be transient. We would actually outsource them, but the other two to three people would be regular employees.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. Are those total employees or that includes, say, if a catering company or if you have a client who wants to do an à la carte type of service where you would have waiters and, and busboy service as well? Or is that, you don't envision that? That's not part of the, you know, vision of this, of this type of business?
No, we haven't, we don't envision it that way.
No, we have our own W9 employees.
Okay. And that's a total of seven, including you two?
So that's, that's correct.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I, yeah, a few things, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, some housekeeping. We did get, I did get a question about Tabachnik. I think we had some people signing in late, so I just wanted to repeat that to bat, the Tabachnik application was withdrawn by the applicant, so that is not going to be heard tonight. As far as public comment, in case, again, if people signed in late, if they have any comments on this application, they can either raise their hand if they're watching on WebX or press star three if they're calling in. And then just regarding this application, I have two, one, I don't even know if it's a correction, but as far as the buses, I do have, we did just very recently receive a use variance application for this site. Since we were not in the office the last two days, I didn't get an opportunity to open it up. So I, there's a chance that, that whoever's storing the buses there might be applying for variance to this board. So I just wanted to make that clear. If the buses are gone, there is a chance that we, you may have an application for that. And I have one question for the applicant. Let me stop real quick. I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute. Okay, I'm gonna continue. I'm trying to, I'm getting a lot of feedback. As far as the nighttime activities, how often, realistically, I can't imagine you're going to have an evening event, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I'm assuming that there's going to be certain evenings, like Sunday nights, Monday nights, Tuesday nights, Wednesday, you know, where an event would be very occasional, whereas Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Saturday would be your busy days. Can you give a sense of a typical week, how many nighttime events you would expect on a typical week?
Right, that's a good question, and that's a reasonable assumption. We likely, I mean, it would be nice for our bank account, but we're not going to have an event Monday through Thursday. I would say, if I were going to estimate, yeah, about two to three.
On, on the prime days that you just mentioned.
On the prime days.
Yeah, that, that'd probably be the, the max.
Right.
For the most part. But again, like you said, just on occasion, it might be like a Sunday through a Thursday.
Right. And we want to be able to offer that service should the opportunity come around, which is why we want to be technically open seven days a week.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason and Danielle? If not, then we can move into John Chadwick. He's, I think I see him on to provide his planning testimony.
And is he going to be presenting any materials? No.
I do believe so. He may only reference the materials that were submitted with the application.
Okay. So what I'm going to ask is Christine, I'm going to make you presenter. So as when Mr. Chadwick is presenting, the board and the public would have the opportunity to, to view what he's talking about. Let me just find Christine on here. All right, Christine, you're presenter. So if you could find the, it's probably best to put up the TRC report again.
It is an accessory building. Myself.
I think we're waiting for Christine to get up the application materials. Your camera's not on though, John.
It's not?
No, but we can hear you.
Should be on now.
Yep, there you go.
Well, Christine gets the documents up. I can swear Mr. Chadwick in. Mr. Chadwick, please raise your right hand. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
You state your name and spell your last and provide us with your professional address, please.
My name is John Chadwick, C-H-A-D-W-I-C-K. Address is 3176 Route 27, Kendall Park, New Jersey.
As long as he still has a license, we'll accept his credentials. He's been before this board many times.
Thank you.
Mark, can you see the?
Yes, it's up, it's up there.
Okay, just making sure.
We lost Mr. Chadwick's video again.
John?
Okay, the audio is fine, correct?
The audio is fine, but okay, there's your video.
Okay. I've been present with all the questions prior. I've got through this application, been to the site many times, and very familiar with your zoning code and master plan of the municipality. This is a straight D1 use. It's in a central business zone. That zone permits all forms of commercial recreation, commercial recreation use. It does not call out this particular use as has been described. Is it functions within the zone that permit everything that's been talked about this evening? Yes. But the technical aspect is the ordinance does not say catering, event planning, or providing services. That, that's where it is. The, the building is, it's got to be around 30 years old. It's non-conforming in terms of its size. It conforms to everything else in terms of your ordinance. There's a very mature hemlock buffer area to the rear of the building separating the townhouses. With one exception, there's one tree down that's probably been down for years. Right out at the end of the, we'll say the northern side of the building. There's a big parking lot in the front. It's about 109 spaces. And then the, what has been referred to as the parking lot behind the self-storage buildings, which are, again, between Eastern Avenue and the townhouses, is around 59 spaces. The space that the use seeks to occupy is 4,526 square feet. Of that space, you're going to have dressing rooms, bathrooms, storage, and various other uses that were shown on a floor plan is submitted as part of the application. The act, the active seating area is ultimately determined by your fire marshal, who's going to set an occupancy standard for this space. But it's roughly 2,000 square feet. And play as you the rule of thumb that 15 square feet is a seating capacity in that type of space. And if you do the math, that means it'd be a maximum of 160 people that could be in the space. This applicant has already limited the space to 150. So I'm just talking about where it is, how it sits. The tests here are suitability, particular suitability. The property is located in a business zone. It's one of the larger CBs of the township. Highly developed, does major access routes through the township. It's also within a large population concentration of the township. All of those factors point to its suitability for the proposal. In terms of dancing municipal plan use purposes, the clearly is an appropriate location. I think it's clearly provides for a private partner, private public partnership to enhance the business community. One of the goals of the township's master plan and has been historically is to retain and expand your business base. The most active part of that right now is the Hamilton Street projects, which have finally taken hold. This, this piece contributes to that overall objective. In terms of negative impacts, I think the, several board members looked at the, what about the noise? It's, first, it's inside a building, and the building is a block building primarily. But second, the township has adopted and, and enforces the public law for noise regulation. And they have to comply with that, and they've agreed that they will comply with it. You have some testimony from, from the applicant who has some familiarity with noise meters of what it is. The ambient noise in there, that's at 65 dBs that he spoke to, is higher than what is the regulation for noise at a residential boundary line during evening hours. So the, the noise impact judgment is one contained by one contained by the being enclosed building. There's no outside activity proposed as part of this. The other aspect was noise generated from the parking lot. And we had discussed this aspect, uh, well prior to this hearing. And the, the best solution is a seventy-five or seventy-six head count. All vehicles will be, uh, through valet parking to the overflow lot if necessary. Because that front parking lot is large. It's, I think I said approximately a hundred, I think it's a hundred and five spaces. So in terms of addressing activity in a parking lot, it's actually a butts, the parking lot butts primarily the, uh, self-storage buildings. To ameliorate or address any other issues, the internal operation, you heard the description. There will be licensed bartenders. There will be owners of the buil- building present. There is a permanent employee base operating the activity or serving the activity. And the valet parking will be done, uh, probably under a contract. I think noise and traffic, uh, have been addressed, uh, and ameliorate any impacts. The use doesn't change the outward appearance of the building. It actually brings people to this site. Possibly helping and assisting the other businesses in terms of their economic wellbeing. And that's the purpose of the diversity of the uses and what they're attempting to do. I find there is no substantial impact to the zoning plan. The use is really, when you break it down, contemplated within the other array of uses for the zone. And the aspect of accommodating this use at the site at the scale that I've described clearly can be accomplished because of the very large existing parking facilities on site. I don't see any substantial impacts on either the neighborhood or the zoning plan for the reasons I've stated.
Okay, thank you, John. Any, uh, questions for John?
I have a question.
Staff, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, and, and I, and I indicated before, I am quite familiar with this, with, with this, uh, shopping center and everything else. I would have felt a lot more comfortable if you would have had Mr. House's, uh, at this point. I, I would have liked to seen his response as to the fire, uh, inspection and everything else.
Well, let me, let me, let me answer that to be, to be fair to the applicant. So, um, sometimes on, on applications, particularly ones like this that don't involve site work, we do one combined TRC report, Technical Review Committee report. So you, John House did get a draft of, uh, of the report and did have the opportunity to comment. Um, I don't believe he had any comments, um, but that doesn't mean that when they go in, well, actually, they will have to go before and get the necessary permit from fire prevention. Um, and it's issues such as, uh, occupancy and egress and things of that nature all will be reviewed and they'll have to comply with whatever requirements are imposed by either code or fire prevention.
I understand what, I understand what you're saying. However, as, as I indicated, I, on all the shopping center, uh, uh, half of the, half of the stores are not occupied and I, uh, still would have preferred, uh, seeing Mr. House's response at this point.
If I, if I could just, um, interject for a second, Ms. Gordon. It sounds like the clients are, are willing to do a maximum occupancy of a hundred and fifty people. Would they be willing to do that as a condition of approval, subject to the occupancy determination of the, the township fire official?
Yes, absolutely.
So it would be a, um, subject to the occupancy as determined by the township fire code official not to exceed a hundred and fifty persons maximum.
That's correct. That's, that, that's agreeable.
Mr. Rosenthal, is that satisfy your concern?
Okay.
Yeah, and Gary, what I wanted to point, I was trying to make is that because this is a use variant, John House was given the opportunity to provide a comment on this application since he is on TRC. He, he did not do that at this point. That doesn't mean he's not going to get another bite at the apple, but he chose not to provide, I guess. Uh, I mean, I could assume that he had no major issues on this use. Uh, and again, the, the details of that will have to be worked out.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, this is Bruce. Uh, I had a question about the, what is that, the Marconi Park across the street? Um, is there access from that parking lot? The Marconi Park, is that?
No. No.
No.
There's a detention base and if you look at the aerial, it shows those trees where the word site is.
Yeah.
And then you have the jug handle coming around that, uh, borders the park.
Right.
And no, there's no, there's no direct access from the parking lot down there.
Got it, okay.
There's a little parking lot within the park.
What, that's, I think there is.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've, uh, two questions. I just wanted to make sure now, now that we have the exhibit up with the aerial photograph that shows the site, the parking and the building. Can either John or, or, uh, the applicant explain where on the building, the, this space would be and where the, basically where the customer entrance would be?
I'm not at the applicant, I, I.
Danielle and Jason, you can.
Yes, so based on the picture that I'm seeing here, um, it looks like the front of the building. Okay, okay, I see it, you're right here. Um, so do you see where that gray strip looks like on top of the building? It's that kind of, okay. Yeah, so the entrance would be to the left of there.
Okay.
It's slightly right there, yep, where that, uh, the pointer is.
Okay.
Sorry, what was your other question?
Well, that's basically, I think you basically answered it. So that, so it's, so it would be basically on the, the space would be on the JFK side of the building. And the customer access would be in the middle front of that building.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and then question for Mr. Chadwick. So, uh, John, can you just expand a little bit? You had said that the use, um, is not specifically in the list of permitted uses, but it's within the, the range or array of the uses that are permitted in the general business district. Can you expand on that a little bit? Perhaps give some examples of what uses are permitted to give the board, you know, a little bit more picture of what you meant by that statement?
Okay, it, it talks about permitted uses which include food, uh, drugstores, drink, household supplies. It also includes, um, eating and drinking establishments. Effectively, you're going to have people sitting down and eating, eating and drinking. It has all of those retail activities described within the, uh, GB zone. So what, what you have is an organi- a, a type of use that organizes people into a business or social event and they're providing eating and drinking. What does a bar do? What does a restaurant do? It's not organized, but the function with the activity is the same. So that's why I say this, although not specifically called out as a permitted use, it walks like a duck. It is.
Okay, anything else?
If I could just follow up on one point, Mr. Chairman, to Mark's question. Um, and it's probably to the applicants. Uh, are you aware of any ingress or egress points to the rear of the building that there is directly accessible from the active seating area?
There are none.
There are none. Okay, so there's no concern, uh, of Mr. Chadwick, since you answered, uh, perhaps during one of the events that the, um, the patrons spill out into the back of the building, uh, by the residential properties?
Now, there's a six-foot-high chain link fence. And then there is a very heavy, mature, uh, hemlock with undergrowth. Um, I don't see.
But your, your answer, your answer that there are, your answer that there is no e- ingress or egress point from the active seating area to the rear of the building, I think is the, uh, most relevant, most relevant answer. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, then. Nothing else? We are ready to open to the public. There are no further witnesses, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I will do this slowly to see if the public has any, uh, again, they can, we'll give them five seconds or so to either do star three or raise their hand in WebEx. Uh, I'm scrolling through the attendee list, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have not seen anybody through the course of the hearing, nor do I now see anybody wishing to speak.
Okay, then we'll close. You want to sum up?
Uh, sure. Um, so again, the applicant is requesting a D one use variance to operate its corporate, uh, business and social event suite at two JFK, two JFK Boulevard. Um, the space again will host fundraisers, book signings, uh, special milestone events, bar mitzvahs. Um, as John has stated, the proposed site is particularly suitable for the event space. Um, and the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Um, it's a redact, uh, adaptive reuse of an existing, uh, suite on a second floor of an existing commercial building. Uh, so we respectfully request that the board, uh, does grant the use variance for the proposed event suite.
Okay, thank you. Okay, more comments, questions, or motion?
I move that this application be approved subject to the conditions that were agreed upon, um, and enumerated by our attorney.
I second.
Okay, all the board.
Laura Grauman?
Yes.
Chris McCracken?
Yes.
Harry Rosenfeld? Gary, you're muted.
I'm gonna hold it though.
Robert Shepard?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Cheryl Bithia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, moving on. One fifty Pierce Street, ZBA twenty oh 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 seventeen. Use variance and site plan for sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four square feet. Addition to the charter school parking expansion for farm script use and associated cycling and modifications. Fifty Pier Street Somerset Block four sixty-eight point oh eight, Lot two point oh two in the M two zone.
Bob, uh, it looks to me like given the time, uh, this application is probably going to go over into the next meeting. Looking at that, I don't know, do you think that that's an accurate assessment?
Can't, can't get away fast enough, huh?
Well, that, if that is the case, and you already have seven people on besides me, I would recuse myself from this part of the meeting.
That is understandable. Thank you.
Well, guys, very happy.
Good luck, Laura.
Good luck, Laura.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Laura.
Come on, take care.
Good luck, Laura.
Wonderful.
Good luck, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Yes.
Okay, one fifty Pierce Street.
All right, I'm going to bring in, uh, Mr. Lanford to start.
Mark, do you want a listing of who's on there?
Yes, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Or the applicant is Z S P I R A.
Okay.
The, um, I guess from Thomas Edison, uh, uh, Edison, uh, what is it? O Y I L D I Z, Energy Smart School.
Okay, we don't, let's, let me, okay, hold on a second. I see, I do see Mr. Stires, right? He's the.
Stires is there. David Feldman is there.
Okay, I'll bring him in.
Uh, Ed Calling, K O L L I N G.
All right, I see him.
Scott Kennel.
Do not see him. Mr. Uh, Jay Troutman?
Don't see Jay Troutman on here.
Well, but next, let's, let's ask Pete, uh, Mr. Lanford, what's, uh, who else we should be bringing in at this point? Because it looks like there may be a full different list.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. Uh, Mr. Troutman was the, uh, traffic consultant who was, who prepared the initial report. He had a conflict for this evening. Mr. Kennel was going to testify. However, uh, the conflict resolved itself, so Mr. Troutman is here this evening to.
All right, I'll bring him over. All right, so we have, uh, we have yourself, obviously. We have Mr. Stires. Uh, we have Mr. Troutman. We have Mr. Calling, Mr. Feldman. Anybody else we should be bringing over?
Yes, we do. Uh, let me find his name. We have the, uh, Mr. Nicholas Gargas, G A R G A S, who was the, uh, security, in charge of security and testified at the previous hearing.
Okay. And can I do it?
I think that should do it.
All right, well, if not, we can bring whoever, if, if we come to that person, we can bring him up, bring him up at the right time.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. As I said, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I am, uh, rather disappointed that Ms. Grauman didn't believe I can get five witnesses to testify in an hour and get this thing finished uh, for her last hearing. I don't think she wants to deal with me any longer. I'm very, very upset. For the record, uh, the applicant, one fifty Pier Street LLC, appeared before this board, uh, in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, under docket number ZBA one five dash zero 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 one one. Uh, that application was to use part of this building, uh, for a charter school. Uh, the other part of the building was operated by Farm Script and is a, uh, warehouse and distribution and packaging facility. The board approved that project in two thousand and fifteen. And when we appeared in two thousand and fifteen, the number of students or the grades that were encompassed in the school were from up to through the seventh grade. And the testimony was that in the following year, we would have an eighth grade class. Uh, we are now up to, uh, having by charter from the state of New Jersey, K through twelve. Uh, the reason we are here this evening, uh, is thankfully, uh, the school needs additional space and we have the ability to provide the additional space, uh, for, uh, the students at the facility. So we're seeking a site plan approval to expand the building. Uh, also fortunately, the, uh, businesses, Farm Script is doing very well. So what we're also here to do is seek, uh, site plan approval to expand the parking lot for Farm Script and also to expand the parking lot for the school. In the previous application, as a result of the approved site plan, we had three hundred and eighty-three parking spaces. Uh, with this plan, we will have five hundred and twenty-four parking spaces. Uh, they will be. They will be divided and segregated as previously required by the board. And there's certain spaces that will be applied to the school and certain spaces that will be applied to FarmScript. The other good thing about this application is that the. Application meets all of the site plan requirements of the ordinance. We do not meet or do not need any variances whatsoever for the amended site plan. We are well under the building coverage requirements, well under the impervious coverage requirements. We meet all of the front, rear, side yard setbacks and. And this building does fit within the confines of this property very well. What I'm gonna do this evening, and I hope to be brief. Some of you who do have a long memory can probably relate back to 2015. And I'll sort of go through the testimony of what we did then and what we're doing now. And try to get this on as quickly as possible. I'll start with Mr. Stires as my first witness.
Mr. Stires? Please raise your right hand. Did you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Believe you're muted, sir?
How about now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please?
Craig Stires, S T I R E S. President, Stires Associates, 43 West High Street, Somerville, New Jersey.
Mr. Stires, you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and have testified before this board on previous occasions?
Correct.
And you were the.
We'll accept that. Go ahead.
Thank you.
And you were the engineer of record and testified in the original hearing in 2015. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, can we have Mr. Stires take over the screen so he can put up his exhibits and proffer his testimony?
Yep, that's done.
All right, Mr. Stires, we've submitted certain information in conjunction with this application. First of all, can you indicate to the board what the existing conditions are on the site? And if you can refer to part of the plan set, refer to it by an exhibit number or plan set number?
Okay. Can you see the, my screen right now?
I see, we see you, not yours.
All right. See if I can figure this out first.
You did it well yesterday.
How about now?
We, we got it.
All right.
And the exhibit that you put up is part of your plan set?
That is the plan set, yes.
Okay, and can you go to the existing conditions sheet?
Okay, that should be on the screen right now, sheet two.
Okay, and can you describe what the existing conditions are? And explain how this site is currently functioning based on the previous approval?
Okay. The site is known as 150 Pier Street, otherwise known as Lot 2.02, Block 468.08. And is located on the southwest of the sideline of Pier Street. Which Pier Street runs right to left as I'm going right here. And this is World's Fair Drive down in the corner. Site certainly contains, let me zoom in a little bit. An existing building doing the outline right here. Of approximately 140,000 square feet. On the northerly side. In this location here. With an entrance in this location on the northwest side is FarmScript. And then on the southerly side of the building. The entrance right here is the entrance for the Thomas Edison School. They, Thomas Edison School Parking is this location right here. The parking for FarmScript, majority of it is in this location right here. With executive parking in this location in front of the building. As far as the Thomas Edison School, back in 2015, as you recall, like I said, the entrance is here. Are the modifications that we did, we created a bus lane or bus drop off area. So the buses would come in off of Pier Street into the site. And stack in this shaded area that I have shown right here. Oops, sorry about that. A little bit. So again, that's that shaded area right here. So the students would get, get off the bus, come up the new sidewalk that we also installed and into the entrance. Part of the other improvements were a play area in this location here. And then a small turf field in this location here. In 2016. FarmScript also came in with administrative site plan to add 100 parking spaces. And that is in this location right here. So that was essentially the changes that were since our last approval. There is, the site is part of the World's Fair Corporate Industrial Subdivision. Which back in 1980, the mid 1980s created essentially World's Fair Drive and Pier Street. There's also three detention basins that served the, for the full development of all the properties. As part of that subdivision of which this parcel was one of them. In the back corner, northwest portion of the site is one of those basins. So essentially half the site drains, you know, the high point would be approximately right here would drain towards that. One regional basin, as I would call it. The other half, which drains to the southeast. Is there's a second basin, if you're familiar with the area, there's a basin right at the corner at the intersection. Across from the shopping center and diagonal from the, from our, our project. Lastly, there's a small wetland area in the front of the property. We are currently in the process of getting a LOI and a general permit for that wetland area. It's under review night right now. Obviously with COVID and all the other things going on, the pace of the DP. Hopefully in the next couple of months, we would have that. There's also an existing loop road that goes around. All the improvements, all the parking. And then comes back into the intersection of World's Fair Drive. The traffic for the school primarily comes in at the intersection. The buses would come in, circulate through, come back out the loop road to the intersection. All the parking for the staff and students. Would do the same process in the parking lot out the intersection. As far as FarmScript, it's the intent that they would come in the northerly entrance. And come into their own parking and utilize their own entrances. So that the two uses are separated. As far as on the site. Let's throw the basis of the existing conditions at this point.
Okay, now can you go to the exhibit which shows the changes to the site plan that we are proposing?
Sure. I'll go to the grading plan. Okay.
And what sheet is that on your plan set?
This is five of 11, the grading utility soil erosion control plan.
Thank you.
And what the school is looking to do, actually, let me back up one, just to kind of highlight it. So this is sheet four, which is a horizontal control plan. The shaded area right here is the addition that the school is proposing. So this is a 15,000 or 16,744 square foot addition. This is up on the second floor because that is where they occupy in the building. So it connects, would connect to the existing second floor of the building. This is also a corridor that would tie in so that provides proper, proper access through the building. And beneath the parking or beneath the addition would be a new parking lot. Of 57 parking spaces. So you would be able to, and this would be one way around the perimeter. And then two way through the middle. There are a number of islands underneath the addition, obviously. Those islands would contain the columns for, to support the second floor addition. And then also to the north, there would be another addition of parking for FarmScript. Due to their, like Peter said, their success and. As you, if you've driven through the site, they've run out of parking spaces. So we are proposing an additional 85 spots for FarmScript. There would be essentially for FarmScript, there would be the extension of the parking that we did in 2016. The aisles would continue on. There would be a loop through the parking. And then the, the closest to the, to the building, it would now be a connection that would be able to access all the way through. There would be a modification over in the. School parking lot to provide additional handicap spot. So that there actually be a loss of one space in this row right here from 21 to 20 to account for that additional space. The intent of the, the parking lot underneath the addition is for the school staff. So the students and the bus drop off will still be in this location right here. By going to K through 12, they will be now up to 650 students. And then if you recall, or whoever was part on the board at the time. We had an approval for seven large buses. And now we will probably be closer to 11 or 12. So that additional bus storage will now come into the entrance. Make a right hand turn. Circulate through the parking lot. Come back around and then stage along the side of the driveway. Until such time they can make a right and get into the queue for the park or for the bus pickup and drop off. Since the project was part of, as I mentioned in the beginning, part of the. World's Fair Corporate subdivision and the basins were constructed for the full build out of the properties. The current site is still under 50% coverage, so the full build out for the sites is 65%. So we do not expect, or we believe that the, the site complies with the stormwater regulations as far as quantity control. Because they're still going into the basins that were designed for the full, full build out. In addition, obviously, things have changed over the years. Stormwater has become more and more regulated. So we also have groundwater recharge and water quality treatment that we need to provide. So what we are going to do is propose. Bio, three bio retention basins. So this bait, a new basin, which is very small. But will collect the runoff from the new parking lot. Into the basin, which would provide the water quality and groundwater recharge for this portion of the addition or the project. A second basin would be constructed on the easterly side. Of the new parking lot adjacent to the building. Again, water quality groundwater recharge before it's discharged. And lastly. A third basin that would account for the additional parking. As well as the, a portion of the 100 spaces that were previously added. For groundwater recharge and water quality.
Mr. Stires, will we be providing any additional lighting on the site as a result of these improvements?
Yes. I were, the lighting plan is sheet eight of 11. So there'll be additional lighting added through the new, the new parking addition for FarmScript. And then as well as for the new parking area, majority of the lighting for the school area would be on the ceiling of the addition. But there will be some additional lights that need to cover the, the perimeter of the new parking lot.
Okay, and the lighting plan has been submitted and reviewed by the engineering department?
Yes.
Now, speaking of the engineering department, there have been reports that were issued in conjunction with this application. Have you had an opportunity to review those reports?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, the police department recommended some additional signage. To be added. I assume we have no problem providing the additional signage requested by the police department stop signs. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And. There was no additional. Well, John House wanted to make sure that the addition of the additional parking would address. The parking needs of the both users and based on your discussions with the owner of the property. These would now satisfy the needs of both tenants. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the Sewerage Authority just needs certain confirmation, which you will provide to them?
Yes.
Okay, did you also review a report from CME dated November 13th, 2020?
Yes.
And that report consists of eight pages plus an attachment. In reviewing that report, they've requested certain changes and modifications to the plan. Can you address all of those comments when we submit revised plans?
Ah, yes.
Okay, and in addressing all of the comments by CME, will they in any way substantially alter? What the board is looking at and reviewing this evening?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, obviously you see the majority of the comment, the 44 comments pertaining to the stormwater. It's, like I said, the reviews for the stormwater is getting more and more detailed as time goes by. And the crux of this is just providing more detail with relationship to the, to the documentation, the report. With the report I've had, I've tried to substantiate the, more so the. Quot, quantity, and that we're still within those regulations, but it's really just meant any more detail to the plans and the report itself.
Thank you. And there's also a, attached to their report, a letter dated September, I'm sorry, November of 2019. From the school concerning certain signage that will be dealt with by our other professionals.
Yes.
Okay. You also have had an opportunity to review the report of Mr. Healy. And Mr. Healy indicated or wanted to know whether the gate that was required. In the original approval was in fact installed, and can you respond and reply to Mr. Healy's query?
Let me just go back up to. The existing conditions, the gate is installed in this location right here.
Okay, and, and that's where we indicated the board required it to be installed in 2015?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And. Mr. Healy wanted some revisions to the lighting or. To make sure it does comply with the ordinance and you will be willing to do that?
Yeah, the, the lighting in the, I need to look at the tree removal and replacement and get that updated as well.
Okay, and we will comply with that?
Yes.
Mr. Lanford, let me just interrupt, just so I'm clear. So the comment about lighting was that you exceed the lighting levels. So either provide justification to the board or revise to comply. So you're saying you're going to revise to comply?
At this, at this juncture, we're going to revise to comply, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have no further questions of Mr. Stires.
Okay, I think we'll go back to what our stated. Method was and hear all the witnesses without, and then, then have questions. So next one is.
Mr. Feldman?
Is Mr. Feldman on?
Yes.
Feldman, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
David Feldman, F E L D M A N. Principal Architect of Feldman and Feldman Architects, Wall Township, New Jersey.
Mr. Healy, can we give the, the screen to Mr. Feldman so he can share his exhibits? Uh, Mr. Healy, can we give the uh, the screen to Mr. Feldman so he can share his exhibits?
All right, yeah, that should be done.
All right, Mr. Feldman, uh, you were the engineer when the applicant came in in two thousand fifteen. And testified before the board at that time?
Uh, that we were the architects, that is.
I'm sorry. Uh, and uh, to refresh the board's recollection, uh, as you're looking at the building from. Uh, the street on Pier Street, the school is on the left side and farm script is on the right side.
That is correct, and in addition to that, farm script is primarily on the first floor while the school occupies the second story.
Okay, and the setup of the school is testified to in two thousand fifteen. The school does occupy the lower level of the first floor on the left side. Which is basically a gymnasium and all of the classrooms and all of the other activities. Of the school are on the second floor, correct?
That is correct.
All right, uh, can you indicate to the board through exhibits what we are proposing this evening?
Yeah, so, so what we have is we have actually two um, exhibits that we're gonna be proposing. Um, the first are three sheets that were prepared by our office. Dated ten-five, twenty-twenty, um, it consists of uh, elevations. Ground floor plan and a second floor plan. The second. The second uh, exhibit that we're gonna be proposing, that we're gonna be also showing, um. Is a colored rendering. Um, which consists of three views of what's proposed. Um, which actually might depict the, the building that we're proposing. Um, on the screen more easily than the architectural drawings. But let me walk you through the architectural drawings first and then I'll revert back to um. The, the renderings.
Before you do that, the, I, I didn't qualify you, you uh. You, you testified in two thousand fifteen, you're a licensed architect, you're still licensed now?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Like you said.
Alright, thank you.
The first time.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, so go- going back to the architectural drawings. Um, it's hard to really see on the computer the, the depth of the elevations that I'm currently showing. Um, but this is looking from the farm script air, from uh, Pier Street. Um, and basically, the addition would occur in this area right here where the mouse is, where the cursor is. Um, the building behind here and all of this is what is currently existing. When I go to the renderings, I'll be able to depict that a little bit more clearly. Um, in terms of the side elevation, which is where the buses queue up to drop off. This portion here to the right is what will be proposed. Um, and then this is the existing gymnasium that the school currently occupies. This is the existing first floor over here that farm script occupies. This is the entrance to the school, which brings you up to the second floor over here. Which is occupied by the school at the, at this particular point. Um, in terms of the floor plan, what we're doing is we're, we're going to be elevating the structure. Um, to create parking that was talked about earlier in the uh, conversation in testimony. And so what we're doing is we are elevating a structure um, with parking beneath. The structure will also have two egress emergency staircases. Um, leading down from the second floor school. Currently, the, the school is um, approximately sixty-five thousand square feet in total. Uh, twelve thou- a little more than twelve thousand, which is currently the gymnasium in the first floor area. And fifty-two thousand seven hundred square feet um, on the second floor. We're proposing this addition to be sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four square feet. The second floor. Addition would be this area right here. It would be basically comprised of five, five additional classrooms, um, a bonus room. A library as well as a multipurpose auditorium area. Uh, in addition to that, there'll be uh, restrooms that would be provided. Both for the auditorium and the library as well as for the classroom. Um, there's also going to be two connections um, that this addition will have. Uh, to the existing second floor that's currently occupied by the school. One would be along a corridor, elevated corridor that will connect. The area of the second floor over here, which is primarily their upper class, uh, eight or nine through twelve. Twelve grade, and that would be a connection that would link the two areas over here. In addition to that, there would be an area that would connect to this portion of the building as well through here. The building would also have, the, the new addition would also have two means of egress as previously pointed out to on the ground floor plan. Which occur at this area of the building and then at this area of the building. Um, going to the renderings. I'm assuming everyone could see the, the renderings at this point?
They're on my screen.
Okay, so going to the renderings, this is the addition that we are building with the parking underneath. Um, this would be coming in where, um, as talked about earlier, if the buses. Came in and had to come through the parking lot and come wrap around here, that's what we're talking about with regards to the. Um, location of this. This area here would be one of the stairwells that would come down from the second floor. This elevation is looking more from Pier Street, um, this being farm script. And then this being the addition. Uh, lastly is this aerial, um, which I guess would show the addition occurring over here. With parking underneath, this is the link that I was talking about earlier that would link this building across. To the existing second floor school, and then this is the other link. That would link the building to the additional uh, building, the, the additional school area currently. Um, as talked about earlier, here, here's, here's an overview of the parking that would occur and how it would loop around. Um, you could also see that the intent was to try to match. In terms of material, the best that we could, um, with what's existing in terms of the brick, in terms of the windows. Um, so, so we're trying to um, match what we have with regards to. Um, the aesthetics of the existing structure. Um, other than that, if there's any other questions, that, that pretty much concludes. The description of the, of the building.
Okay, just, just wanna, one quick question for me, and then if the board members, I think, are gonna hold their questions till the end, but. Uh, this exhibit that we're looking at right now also shows the new parking for the farm script. Uh, uh, use, is that correct?
It does, it shows what was depicted on the site plan wrapping around back into this area over here. And then continuing around through here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Okay, next witness.
Um. If we can call Mr. Gargas, please.
The Gargus, please raise your.
Yes, sir.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last and provide us with your professional address, please.
Nicholas Gargus, G A R G A S, Thomas Edison School, one fifty Pier Street.
All right, and Mr. Gargus, uh, what is your uh, title at uh, the school?
Security Coordinator.
Okay, and you also testified in two thousand fifteen, did you not?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and in two thousand fifteen, we had extensive discussions on. Uh, how we would handle the buses coming to the site, how we would handle the buses leaving the site. And uh, how we would segregate uh, our traffic with the school from farm script. Farm scripts traffic, correct?
Correct, sir.
And, and, and how's that, how did that all work out?
Um, at this point in time, uh, and I'll go pre-COVID because it was a lot busier. Um, with the queuing that we're doing, uh, we have room for the buses on site. We can fit seven buses into the shaded area as depicted earlier. We would load those buses, send them on their way, bring the other ones up for the queue, load those buses. Um, the whole process takes approximately, um. In the morning, it's a, a running process, so we don't have all the buses there at the same time. So it's a lot easier, it's a lot quicker, and in the afternoon, with the buses stacking the queue, um. Start to finish twenty minutes, twenty-three minutes, we're averaging.
Okay, and i- in your opinion, that the site is functioning uh, well? It's not creating any problems on any of the, on either Pier Street or World's Fair Drive?
Um, no, sir, as far as I can tell, since we've been there, we've had no incidents reported. Traffic runs smooth, uh, we've never had a complaint. Um, and we're incident-free, knock on wood.
Okay, and the, as testified to by Mr. Stires, there is a segregation. Of the traffic for farm script and a segregation of the traffic from the school, is that correct?
Correct, and we, we also don't, uh, their shifts and our dropping off and picking up. Are staggered times, so they don't occur at the same time. So when we're busy, their shift is already there and working.
Okay, so a- as you've indicated, there are no problems out on the street, or are there any problems or conflicts? That have arisen over the last five years between yours, your company, your school and farm script? And parking or traffic or circulation?
Um, we've worked out some issues, um, very minor that we've had, farm script is very agreeable. Um, we have several points of contact there, we sit down every other week, talk to see if there's any problems. Um, here's symbiotic relationship where we're actually doing very well.
Okay, and with respect to the parking, the new parking field for the school. Uh, which is going to be located under the proposed building. Uh, you heard Mr. Stires indicate that that was going to be solely for faculty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there are some students that drive to school and that was testified to in two thousand fifteen. Uh, those students that, that do drive to school will be parking in the rear of the property as they currently do now.
Um, actually, no student parks um, on the rear, but we will allow that once this goes through, yes.
Okay. Um, do you know off the top of your head with respect to this expansion, how many more faculty members we will be adding?
I don't believe there will be that many, uh, we already have a twelfth grade in, so we're al- already fully staffed. We may, because of additional students, right now, we're at sixty-three current employees and that. From the janitors all the way up to the principal, um, maybe one or two more, I can expect, that's about it, I, I can't see more than that.
Okay. Uh, I have no further questions of this witness.
Okay, next witness.
Mr. Troutman.
The Troutman, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last and provide us with your professional address, please.
Uh, yes, Jay Troutman, uh, professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates Traffic Engineers. Uh, address is one oh five Elm Street, Westfield, New Jersey.
Uh, Mr. Troutman, you also were a witness who was qualified and testified in two thousand fifteen?
Yes.
And you're still licensed?
Yes.
All right, he's good to go.
All right, and you prepared a traffic report that was submitted in conjunction with this application. Dated July seventeenth, twenty-twenty, is that correct?
Yes, we did, that's correct.
And in preparing that report, uh, did you do site visits?
Yes.
Okay, and the site visits that you did were pre-COVID when the school was operating normally?
Yes, that was in February of twenty-twenty.
Okay, uh, can you indicate to the board what you found? And what your conclusions were with respect to the proposed expansion?
Yes, uh, what we did was, uh, we did full. Manual turning movement traffic counts at both of the site driveways so that we could capture. All of the activity that the school was generating as well as uh, farm script. On a weekday morning, that's around the same time, we were able to capture all of that in the same period. On the weekday afternoon, we had to extend the count period to go earlier in the afternoon, so that was a long count period from two-thirty to six. And that basically gave us two different peak hours to analyze, there was a, an early afternoon surge. For the school and then a little bit of a later afternoon surge with farm script, so that was all captured. And then we were able to factor up the actual school trip generation, use real-world data. And just factor that up by twenty percent, put that back into the, into the network. And reanalyze the capacity, and we found that there is adequate capacity for twenty percent future growth. Even though they already have K through twelve there, we, we factored it up by the um, by twenty percent. We ran, reran all the capacity calculations. As you know, there's a, there's a traffic signal controlled intersection there. That gives us good capacity to get um, all the traffic in and out, that'll continue to be the case in the future. We found um, that the traffic and parking activity uh, with, associated with the expansion can be accommodated. Uh, the, the onsite traffic circulation pattern actually becomes improved. When the site is all connected together with, with the new farm script parking lot, uh, connecting in the front. And that um, that the uh, the traffic will be safe uh, in and out of the site again. Because of the traffic signal as well as the uh, the farm script driveway uh, that we analyzed.
And in, in looking at the operations and harkening back to two thousand fifteen, it was the intent that the. School would use the driveway to the left of the property where the traffic signal is. And then farm script would use the other driveway, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you find that that's how the property was in fact being used when you made your visit?
Uh, yes.
To the site.
Yes, that, that was reflected in the count data, you could clearly see, you know, the two uses uh, segregating. And, and that activity surging, you know, depending on which use was uh, was active at the time. And um, the o- the other good thing is that you do have that, that staggering in the afternoon. So that the school kinda gets its stuff done earlier in the afternoon and then. It's kinda quiet when the farm script uh, activity is heavier.
Okay, and, and when you were there in February, did you see that there was a need for the additional parking for farm script?
Yes, we did.
Okay, uh, now. In the staff report that was generated by CME, were attached. Uh, certain letters that were sent to a, the, the police regarding. Uh, some concerns that the school had about signage and the intersection. Can you just briefly outline what the concerns of the school were? And your opinion as to whether there should be some additional signage and how we should deal with that?
Yes, um, I, I think the intent of the school would, in that correspondence was just to advise the. The public of that school's exist- existence there, um, there, there are. There are a lot of different signs in the manual that we use as traffic engineers, the manual on uniform traffic control devices. In this case, what I would recommend is that school area signs be installed on both Pier Street approaches approaching World's Fair Drive, as well as on World's Fair Drive approaching Pier Street. It's a sign that's designed to just advise a motorist that they are coming into a school area.
And you would be willing to sit down with the police department and/or the engineering department to determine the appropriate locations for these signs?
Yes, and we looked at the man, we looked at the manual, and those are the signs that we would qualify for based on the manual.
Okay, based on your analysis of the site, is there any need for any additional striping at either of the driveways or at the intersection with Pier Street and World's Fair Drive?
No.
So everything there is currently complying with all requirements?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Okay, next witness.
Mr. Yildiz.
Mr. Yildiz, can you hear me?
I'm not sure if he was brought into the, I don't see him.
I don't, I don't see him.
I just brought him in now.
Mr. Yildiz, can you hear us?
He's on mute.
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, we cannot see you. Okay. Mr. Yildiz, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
August Yildiz, Y-I-L-D-I-Z, 150 Pier Street.
Mr. Yildiz, what is your relationship to the school?
I'm the lead person, principal.
Okay, and were you the principal in 2005?
Yes, I was.
And you testified in 2005?
Yes, I was there.
Okay. We are, as you heard the testimony, we're looking to expand the school by providing some additional classrooms and also some additional multipurpose rooms and another large room up on the second floor of the building, is that correct?
Yes.
When we were here in 2005, how many, what grades did you have at that time?
K through 7.
Okay, and you testified to that, and then you also indicated that you were going to have an eighth grade the following year? Okay, subsequent to that, did you get your charter from the state amended so that you can have students from K through 12?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and does the charter set forth how many students you can have?
A maximum 650.
Okay, and that would be basically 50 students per grade?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay, and I think we probably should talk about pre-pandemic. How many students did you have at that time?
544, right now, 594. But since the school's virtual right now, there's nobody coming to school building currently.
Okay, and you have, I think you testified five years ago that you have two classes for each grade, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And do you have two classes for each grade in K through 12?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and operationally, as a result of the addition that we will be providing, if the board were to approve the site plan, would you be adding any more staff or employees?
There will be extra two staff members, but there will be library and multipurpose room and five classrooms, that's it.
Okay, but the overall addition of staff members will be two people?
Yes.
So you currently have on staff all the teachers that you need for the K through 12?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and back in 2005, we made certain representations that there are no activities at night other than back-to-school nights, that there were no interscholastic sports, and all of those conditions were contained in a resolution of approval in 2005. None of those things are going to change with this addition, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Okay, next witness.
Mr. Colling.
Yes.
Mr. Colling, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Please raise your right hand. And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
My name is Edward Colling, K-O-L-L-I-N-G, 123 Oak Hill Avenue in Long Branch, New Jersey.
Mr. Colling, you are the only one who did not testify five years ago, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and what is your occupation?
I am a licensed professional planner in New Jersey. I'm also certified as a planner by the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I've been in professional practice license since 1984.
Okay, that's fine, we'll move on.
Okay, and Mr. Colling, you are familiar with the zoning ordinances of Franklin Township, the master plan of Franklin Township, have, are you not?
Yes, I am, I reviewed all both.
Okay, and you also had an opportunity to review the resolution of approval from 2015, which I referenced earlier this evening?
Yes, that's correct.
And you are also familiar with all of the exhibits and the subject property, which is the subject of this application?
Yes, I have reviewed the engineering plans, the architecture plans, the traffic report, et cetera.
Okay, and in fact, in 2015, this board found that the school was inherently beneficial use and granted the use variance for the school, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, you have an opinion as to the grant of the use variance that we are seeking this evening for the expansion of the school?
Yes, and I'll just jump right to it because I think the other experts have described the property, what the building existing is, what the proposal is. So I'll just jump right to the proofs. And in fact, the proposed development is inherently beneficial use. It was found as such in the previous resolution, and it continues to be. And therefore, the use itself meets the positive criteria. Inherently beneficial uses by their very nature are considered to promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and therefore promote subpar grave 2A of the municipal land use law, which is to encourage a municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. I would add that in addition, I think the fact that the proposed project meets all bulk standards and also demonstrates that the project consistent with subpar grave 2C, which talks about providing adequate air, light, and open space. Also, I think the larger size of this property, it's over 16 and a quarter acres, provides sufficient space and an appropriate location for this type of use according to the needs and requirements of this kind of use, and will meet the needs of New Jersey citizens, which is subpar grave 2G. I would point out that the size in and of itself, the way that it's able to handle the circulation and the way it can function to serve both uses which are currently on the property and will continue on the property goes to the particular suitability of this property for the proposal. And I think another factor affecting the particular suitability of the property is its location. It's at the edge of what was the M2 zone and now the B1 zone by virtue of a recently adopted ordinance, and it's adjacent to two residential zones rather than deep in the middle of a commercial zone. So I think its location, which adjoins the residential uses and doesn't interrupt other commercial activity further deeper into the commercial zones, business zone, I think goes to the particular suitability as well. In terms of the negative criteria, which is another prong, I don't see that the granting of this variance creates substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan, although it's not a permitted use, use already exists at the site. Its expansion will not greatly affect the operation of the site or the ability of the site to continue to at least partially be occupied by a conforming use. And the site's location at the edge of the zone district should not appreciably affect the use of other properties in the zone for their intended commercial purposes. And similarly, the granting of the variance will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good. Use in fact is inherently beneficial, and therefore by its very nature, it serves the public good and general welfare. But in addition, I think the size of the property allows for a property to function well, provide adequate setbacks, provide adequate circulation, lessen impacts on the roadway network, and also lessen impacts on adjoining properties, especially residential properties due to being able to meet the wall setback requirements. And there is substantial landscaping or landscape buffer areas, existing landscaping that exist along the side property line adjoining the, I think it's the CR zone, and along the rear property zone which joins R15. So I think we've met the positive and negative criteria for the granting of the use variance.
Thank you, Mr. Colling, I have no further questions.
Okay, then the floor is open for questions from anyone for anyone.
I do have one question. Where the building overhangs the parking lot with the clearance?
Mr. Feldman? Mr. Feldman? He's not hearing me.
I'm going to go ahead and see if I can unmute him. I believe I just unmuted you, Mr. Feldman.
Yes.
Did you hear the question, Mr. Feldman?
I did not, I, my computer's been lagging.
Can we repeat the question from Mr. Feldman, please?
Sorry.
Your civil may also be able to answer the question as well. Where the addition overhangs the parking lot? What is the clearance between the pavement and the?
Approximately, approximately 14 feet. The floors, the new addition is going to line up with existing floor height, and I believe we have approximately 14-foot clear underneath.
Did the fire department have a chance to review the plans?
Yes, they did, Mr. House had no comment.
Yeah, I'm at the fire that was dated December 9, 2020.
I saw there was a comment, I believe it was in the engineer's review letter, asking the floor to identify the height of that clearance. I just wonder out of curiosity if Mr. House had the benefit of understanding the clearance requirements. The fire engines, and what I've seen in the past, have typically been at a height of up to 13 feet 6 inches. So if the understore is 14 feet, there is clearance, but it is getting very close. And where this isn't just a typical overhang, there's actually a building above. We just want to make sure the building is protected.
The fire, the fire does comment, we reserve the right to make any additional comments based upon the submission of revised plans or testimony presented to the board.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there, but thank you for answering.
Yeah, and I'll just speak to that briefly, which is that I know John House, issues of clearance are common, are issues that he commonly opines about. So when we have applications, for example, for solar panels in parking lots, he always, so I can't imagine he didn't look at the plans and, you know, he would have commented on that if he had an issue.
We could, we could, we could have a discussion with him, and if need, if need be, there is along the walkways that link the two structures, the existing structure and the new structure, there is room to provide additional steps up into that new addition if we.
Okay, thank you, and just to kind of expand on that, what is the typical height of a school, are you aware?
Of a school bus?
Yes, so in the testimony given, the school bus would kind of make that right and turn around at a parking lot. What if the school bus made the left?
Okay, so I am not aware of that, I'm sure our engineer is. However, it's not intended for the school buses to travel underneath the structure.
Just in case someone did make a wrong turn.
They, it is, there's an adequate room for a school bus to turn, and it would have to back out. There's not enough room for it to maneuver around, but it can back out. There's enough room under the overhang for the bus.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
So they've talked a lot about the segregation and separation of the two uses, and one of the main reasons for that is in the original approval in 2015, that was one of the main issues that the board had, was you have a school use and you have a relatively employee-intensive, light industrial use sharing the same property. And that's the reason why the gate was put on. So I have a few questions related to that. The first question is for Mr. Troutman. Mr. Troutman, on your figure four, and that's street peak hour, what hour of the day is that?
Let me, let me look at that, please.
Sure.
That was 4:45 to 5:45 PM.
Okay, so then, based on your knowledge of the hours of operation or when the, when the school lets out, if you will, and when the shifts changes occur at farm script, I see the World's Fair Drive driveway, which the testimony in 2015 was basically that that was going to be for the school, and the other driveway was going to be used by farm script. I see 99 cars coming out of the site at the World's Fair Drive, and only 39 coming out of the westerly. So can you indicate why the numbers are so much higher on the one? And is that school traffic or farm script traffic that's going out the World's Fair Drive exit?
I believe it's school traffic because they do have some programs where people stay. So there is still school stuff into the street peak hour, but there.
99 cars for after-school activities?
Yes, I mean, I believe a majority of that is school traffic, yes. Because if you look at the numbers, if you look at the numbers on figure three, there's 300 cars coming out, so that's the school surge there. Now, I guess your point is that if there wasn't a gate in place, is it possible that farm script employees were making their way to that signal? Yes, that's possible, there's no way for us in the field to trace who those cars were. But I, seeing those numbers, to me, and they're dramatically lower than school dismissal, led me from hearing the last operations testimony to believe that that was because of after-school functions, which they do have clubs and stuff where you would have secondary activity during the street peak hour.
Is there an afternoon shift change for a farm script?
I don't know the shift thing at farm script, but I just counted what was going on out there the entire afternoon.
Okay, when you were at the site, and you've been at the site a number of times, is the gate actually closed, or is it just there and open?
I don't actually have any notes. Uh, I, I don't actually have any notes, observations about the gate. I, I didn't, I didn't take note of that.
All right, you've had the opportunity to review the site plan, obviously, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that, and the site plan has a connection. Uh, actually, I'm gonna ask Mr. Feldman, you're still the presenter. Can you put up the last exhibit that you had, which was the uh, three D rendering of the, of the building? Because I think that showed the front of the site.
Yeah. You say it?
No.
No?
All right, uh. There you go. Okay, so. The front of the site, you can see where the proposed uh, addition is going to be cantilevered over the, the new proposed parking lot. And you see the uh, what is the existing parking lot, surface parking lot in front of it.
This area?
Yes, exactly. To the right of that is the, is to propose new parking for farm script. Within exactly where, and then, and that is going to be connected. To that existing parking lot. So farm script employees are going to be able to drive through the front of that site. And access the World's Fair Drive driveway. So the, the whole issue or the whole purpose of the gate is now negated. So how, how are you possibly going to continue to ha- continue this segregation of having? The, the school use the World's Fair Drive driveway and farm script use the other?
Mark, my solution would be to put a gate in that new connection point.
Why, why have a connection point at all?
I, I would think that you, you would want a connection point for circulation in case of emergencies. I, I don't think you'd want to not connect it. Also, just so you, if you recall, that front parking lot. Is actually farm script's parking lot. That always was, that was part of the original site plan. That front parking lot is not part of the school's parking.
No, I understand that, but the testimony in two thousand and fifteen was that, that was for, I think that was perhaps for the office or exec- executives in the company and it's. Uh, only a drop in the bucket compared to the overall parking for farm script.
And, and that is correct, and that is correct, Mr. Haley. That was the testimony and that's how it's currently being used. So if some of those executives left. Uh, at four thirty or five o'clock, they may be part of the count at that intersection because logically they would probably. Would have to go out because there is no way for them to go out the other way because there is no connection to the rest of the parking lot at the present time.
So your solution is to make the connection, but to gate the connection?
We can do that.
Yeah, Mark, that, that's the only reason I connected it was for emergency services. Uh, I fully understand what you're saying and. And I think the solution would be same thing as put a gate there so that uh, if there's ever an emergency, they can get through the gate.
Well, what I would suggest is if the board is um. Yeah, amenable to agreeing to that. What I would suggest is that staff take a look at the, the appropriate way to um. Have that be an emergency access. I mean, I, I don't know if a gate alone is the right solution or if there should be some um. Uh, drivable curb, you know, to make it more of an official um, you know, barrier with the gate. Um, but uh, moving on to, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, the, the additional buses was new to me. Um, there's no mention of it. I don't believe in the application, no mention of it in the traffic study. Um, so the testimony I, I heard was that it's currently six or seven. And that with the new proposal, it's going to be, I believe, ten or eleven. Um, that was a testimony um, from Mr. Stires. And you'll forgive me, I forget the gentleman's name, but the security uh, officer had mentioned that the way that they're, that the. That the queuing is for seven buses. And that the way they're going to, and there's, I don't believe there's any physical modifications to accommodate the additional buses. But you're going to do it operationally by staggering the buses. I, I don't know about the board, but I, I, I think there needs to be a little bit more explanation about how that's going to work.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's what he said, Mark. But let me, I think what he said was that in the morning, when the buses come in. They don't all come in at the same time, uh, and there is no queuing problem, uh, because. Uh, there's always adequate room on that drive aisle that we set, we set forth for the buses. Uh, he indicated that in the afternoon, when all the buses show up to pick up the students. There is insufficient queuing in that drive aisle that's to the left, on the left side of the property. And so that the additional buses come in and queue uh, in the area. In uh, in that driveway, uh, they come in and turn around in the farm script parking lot and then queue in the driveway. And then we'll move up and load up and then leave. So that's what he says, that everything is contained on site. There is queuing in the afternoon on that dry, on the main aisle driveway. Where it was designed and there's also additional queuing uh, basically on the other side of the playfield.
It's so, so the striped area that's shown along the driveway, that accommodates how many buses?
Uh, if, if I recollect, was designed to accommodate uh, eight buses. Uh, it was when we had our original approval. And maybe Mr. Gergis can confirm that. Are you still around?
Yep, I'm still here. Um, the shaded area, the bus drop-off area can hold up to seven buses, seven full buses. Um, the queue area, we've been putting our additional buses and that is in the afternoon. In the morning, you are correct. There's no need to queue because the buses come in staggered. We open up our doors at seven, well, seven twenty-five, we start accepting students and the buses come in. One, two, the, the tops three at a time. So there's no need to, there's no need for extra room uh, during the morning drop-off.
So there's currently, so you, you're saying there's, there's never been an issue with queuing of buses out onto World's Fair Drive or Pierce? That's never occurred?
Um, it has on new bus drivers until we put in place the turning in the executive lot. Um, and that they'll start, they'll stage along the bottom of the soccer, or we call it a soccer field.
Oh, okay, so they drive into, they make, they, they turn into the site, they make a right into that driveway. And then go into the executive and kind of turn around and queue.
Right, they come around um, the, around that lot, just make a, a giant circle. Come out and by the bottom of the soccer field, that's where they'll stage. When we fill up our buses in the afternoon with the students, they pull off. When it's clear, they'll come around, take their place and we'll go from there. Right now, we currently have ten buses. Um, so there's three in the queue by the soccer field in the afternoon.
You currently have ten? I thought I heard you have six and you're going to have ten.
No, sir. Um, we currently have ten buses.
With the expansion, then, how many will you have?
Up to maybe two more. Um, depending if the school goes to full capacity. Um, each bus holds fifty-four people, so that's a hundred and four. So uh, one or two more buses. I, I would figure on two more buses.
All right, so now we're hearing, now we're hearing twelve, so.
Two or one more bus because, sorry.
Let me finish my question. So if the site plan accommodates for eight. And under the proposal, you'll, you'll need, you'll have a need for twelve, why don't you accommodate for that on your site plan?
That question wouldn't be for me, I imagine.
I think that would be probably either for the site engineer or traffic engineer.
I don't follow the question, Mark. I think we, we testified that we have a, a pattern where we stack the buses. In the drive aisle in the front of the building. Uh. I mean, I, I guess the answer is we, we could create more impervious by widening that out if necessary, but. It, it is functioning that way right now, so I, I think that's the testimony of Mr. Gergis that, that that's the way they're operating now. There are no issues. So I don't know whether you really want us to.
Here's, part of my issue is it was never raised in your application. So I don't know if traffic safety, CME, or any of the other staff would have commented on this issue. I don't know if, if traffic safety or a CME would have had an issue in the fact of that you're using a drive aisle. That's intended for vehicular movement to stack buses.
Not only that, in the, in the new site plan, they'll actually be blocking their parking garage probably.
Can everybody please mute themselves if you're not speaking because I'm recording this and there's a lot of background. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, and I think that's why we indicated uh, that the. Parking in that new area is for teachers only because the teachers would still be in the building. They would not have. Left the building till after the buses leave and the students leave. So they're really not impeding anybody from uh, leaving that parking area. And as Mr. Gergis indicated, uh, that this whole process takes about twenty to twenty-three minutes. Uh, so. The time that the buses are in that area is a very, very short period of time. Uh, Mr. Haley, I, I understand your concern and I think if there needs to be some modifications, I'd be happy to sit down. With uh, you know, Mr. House, if he's concerned about it, uh, Darren. Uh, or the police and see if there has to be any modifications, signage, striping or anything else. Like I said, there is room to, to maneuver there. There is room to widen out a drive aisle if we need to do it, so. Uh, we'd be happy to sit down and talk about that.
Well, well, Mark, this is Kunal. Uh, there was one question that you asked, which I, I know a little bit, so I could possibly help you with it. Um, there are a lot of student parents coming in uh, for the after-school because the school does not have. After, you know, bus services for club, you know, for post-school activities like uh. Uh, let's say Frantaine High would have or so on. So parents have no option but to come and pick up their kids uh, in their cars. And then there are multiple club options provided by the school. Mark, you are on mute.
I, I, okay, I'm just, there's, we're hearing testimony that again was not um. Addressed in the application and was not evaluated in their traffic study or accommodated on their site plan. I can't speak to what other staff may say.
As I indicated, Mr. Haley, we'd be happy to, to meet with staff and, and go through this issue. Uh, fortunately, we have the room and the ability to make modifications. Uh, if need be to widen that drive aisle and the, along the front of the building to accommodate the queuing of the buses, there's plenty of room there to do it. Uh, so uh, if, if the board wants to see it. Uh, I would suggest that we adjourn the matter till we can sit down with staff. If the board is confident that we can work it out with staff and provide uh, what is necessary for queuing, uh, we can do that also and ask for approval subject. To meeting with the staff uh, to amend the plan to deal with that issue.
Well, a couple of things start to concern me about it. Traffic is obviously, I mean, we're talking about it now, and yet we have in the traffic report. A study done and nobody observes whether the gate is open, closed or used or whatever. Which is an integral part of what we established last time. And also the, there. There seem to be several options, maybe the board should be aware of. About whether you block off the new area for farm script or leave a gate, have a gate, or as Mr. Haley suggested, curbing. And I understand. You know, in the, the way the school's operating now, those buses can key or queue around the corner. Along that driveway where the new section is going and there's no issues. But it probably isn't a good idea for us to plan. You know, as part of your plan to allow. That potentially allow driveways in the parking areas to be blocked. And, and I could see that happening with two or three buses parked along that. Other driveway in front of the new addition. There must be another way around it. But the gate, the gates are important. We need to know if they're functioning, if they're being used. And we, and we do need to know what might go, like I said, by the new parking lot.
If, if I may also make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, it sounds as if to the intent. Is, uh, or at least the practice currently is that the buses enter into that drive aisle. And then use the parking area as a turnaround to then come back towards the main queuing aisle. Uh, that perhaps there could be a redesign of that front parking area to not only accommodate. The turnaround for the buses, but also to comport with the intent of the board. To keep the parking area separate between the two entities. So it's just an idea. I understand. The concept of keeping the site as a, yeah, a flow appropriate for, for safety. But perhaps that, that could be revisited with the, the concerns of the board in mind.
It sounds like a good idea.
I, again, I, I would be happy to meet with, you know, have Mr. Troutman and uh, Mr. Stires and meet with staff. Uh, and see if we can discuss this and come up with some sort of solution. Uh, and if the board is, wants to see it, then I would suggest that we uh, continue the matter and give us the opportunity to have to sit down and. Uh, come up with some at least revised sketches that we can show to the board.
Well, I would like the board input. I, for one, I think would like to see it. Uh, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board members. If they're okay with just with staff review and a solution that way. Uh, fine, if they would like to see it, then maybe we need to continue.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should continue and let them meet with staff first.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
I guess that pretty much answers that part of the question, Mr. Lambert.
Thank you. Uh. Having, having that information, I, I think we can perhaps pause this evening since we're beyond ten o'clock. Given the holiday and trying to get meetings with staff may be a little bit difficult. Uh, Mr. Haley, do you think uh, if we carry this till the twenty-first of January, that we would have the opportunity? Uh, to schedule something with staff to look at this between now and then?
Yeah, just give me a second. Christine, do you happen, do you happen to know what's on the agenda for the twenty-first?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but we have um, the zoning board kind of has been full with things. Uh, we have those. Two churches that have been carried. Uh, I'm not, not exactly sure if they're on the twenty-first or not because we were closed to at the township today. I don't have my paperwork in front of me.
All right, so let's, let's.
Yeah, Mr. Haley, the, the churches are on, on the seventh. Uh, when we had a discussion a while, a couple of days ago about scheduling matters, I think you indicated that there was room on the twenty-first.
Yeah, yes, you're right. In fact, I went to the website. The only thing on is uh, uh, another small application for a pre-existing non-conforming use, otherwise. The twenty-first is open.
Hey Pete, uh, if I'm involved on the twenty-first, I know I can't be here unless something changes.
The next meeting after that would be February, um, let me see, whatever. Uh, Mark, I'm recording on my phone, so I can't look at my calendar. Could you uh, just tell me what the first Thursday in February is? I believe it's the fourth, if I'm not mistaken. I just don't want to be on record of saying the wrong date. I believe it's February fourth is the first meeting.
That, that's correct, Christine. Uh, is, would somebody from your office be available on the twenty-first?
I, I can't confirm that right now. We, we've had a lot of problems with this third Thursday of the month we bounced.
We bounced a bunch of stuff tonight to that date, so I would be safer with the fourth. When I can come, I've already entrenched myself in the case.
What, um, what about January seventh? Cause I, I, I know we do have other things on that night, but if this is the only issue to discuss uh, for this matter, you know, perhaps dismiss, especially if you meet with staff and agree to whatever changes um, with staff, perhaps, you know, the continuation of this is relatively short.
I, I, that would work for me. I think, Mr. Haley, you're gonna have to be able to figure out whether we can, given the holidays that are coming up, whether we can get a meeting with staff between now. If we, if you wanna carry it to the seventh and if for some reason we can't meet with staff, we can always carry it again. Maybe that's the way to go, but it, it probably makes sense. I do not think that it will take a lot of time at the next meeting if we can work things out with staff. I also think at the next meeting, the only people that we would need it would be Mr. Troutman and Mr. Stires. I, I don't think any of my other, Mr. Gergis can be there uh, just in case, but uh, I don't think obviously we need the planner or, nor do we need uh, the principal or any, or uh, the architect at the next meeting.
Let's just make sure that, does the board have any questions for either the architect or the planner? I'm hearing silence.
The public, what about the public?
Oh, that's true. Very good, very good point, Christine. Very good point.
The youth, does it show a, a large public segment out there?
Yeah, we do have people.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I agree with Mr. Lanford that we move it to the reorg date and then if we cannot get staff to review the, the letters in time to, to com- complete a review, that we then move it again uh, to a new date, um, whatever that date may be. People's calendar might be open at that point, whether it be February fourth or even a date after that. Just to set the calendar as a notice.
So is it January seventh then, Mr. Lanford?
That, that works for me. Do, do we wanna take questions from the public for the uh, planner or the architect or do we wanna hold everything till January seventh?
Well, Mr. Thomas, um, I, I think we can, we could, that might be a good idea. We do have um, some public, but throughout the meeting, I, I've not seen a raised hand. So, you know, if, if we could maybe take a few minutes to see if there's any comments uh, or questions from the public related to the testimony of the architect or the planner. Dan with Dan, uh, would that, would that be um?
We, we can do that and limit it to the architect and the planner because there'll obviously be different information.
And, and Dan, do you have any issue with doing it that way?
No, um, again, I, I'm not gonna, um, Mr. Lanford, you know, this is interesting, you're, you're, you're entitled to put your case on as every, as you see fit. Uh, if by allowing the public now to answer questions based on their testimony will satisfy the public portion. And I'm kinda just thinking out loud here, so forgive me a second. Um, and if the public is given that opportunity and no new testimony is necessary from them after the reviews are completed, I think that that is okay to proceed this evening with the public question section for those witnesses only.
And, and if for some reason, Dan, that uh, there's gonna be a change in the architecture, which I don't envision or because of a change, a variance may be created and I need additional planning testimony, you'll have to bring them back anyway.
That, that's correct.
All right, so let's, so for the public, um, if you have any questions of the architect or the planner, if you're on WebX, uh, you'd have to press the raised hand icon or if you're calling in, press star three. I'll give you a few seconds to do so. All right, Mr. Chairman, as I said previously, that there, there has not been anybody raising their hand through the hearing and I don't see any member of the public doing so at this time and I do not see anything in the chat area either.
Okay, then we'll close and technically they would have another opportunity the next time in here too. So we'll go for what, January seventh?
January seventh. Mr. Haley, if you can check with uh, with Darren and the police and, and let me know as soon as possible when they're available so that I can have Mr. Stires and Mr. Troutman available and we can do a Zoom call when needs to be done. Try to get this thing wrapped up as quickly as possible. I'd appreciate it.
All right, I'll do that. And Christine, I just made you presenter, so if you could put up the information for the January seventh meeting?
Before Christine, you go into that, Mr. Lanford, do you agree to a tolling of the time for approval from now until the January seventh date?
Uh, I believe you're still good, but just in case you're not, I will grant an extension of time through January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, the deadline's already, is already February sixteenth, so we're, we're good.
Yeah, I, I thought we were.
I, I'd rather have the extension.
Okay, Mark, it's up. Can you see it? Mark?
Yes.
Oh, can you see it up on your screen?
Yep. So um, we were told we need to, we need to, we actually do need to read the uh, the link. So Christine, I'll just do it real quick. Uh, so if you're calling, you're going to be watching, the meeting's gonna be carried to January seventh uh, two thousand and twenty-one at seven thirty PM. It's gonna be held remotely. If you're gonna be wa- participating via WebX, the link will be HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Franklin TWPNJ dot webx dot com forward slash Franklin T W P N J forward slash onstage forward slash G dot PHP question mark M T I D equals E one E eight nine C seven nine D eight seven one oh nine three C B seven eight five zero F three four C D nine seven six six A five C. We're gonna leave it up here for a few minutes, so you can write that down or you can go to our website, maneuver to the zoning board section, which is under boards and committees, and go to the January seventh, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twenty-one meeting and the link uh, which that you see before you is provided there. If you're gonna call in, the number is one four oh eight four one eight nine three eight eight and the access code is one seven three seven one zero seven eight oh seven. You could also call Christine Woodbury, the board secretary, at seven three two eight seven three twenty-five hundred, extend.